We're gonna do some business tonight. So, welcome to the regular city council meeting of the city of Colleyville, and it will now come to order on November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five at seven P. M., and I will call the roll. Mayor Protem Elder.
Here.
Councilmember Alfonso.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Protem Richardson.
Here.
I am here. Councilmember Graves.
Here.
Councilmember Gunderson.
Here.
Councilmember Rain.
Here.
Officer Crabtree. All right, got you back there, kid.
Ready.
Good to see you here. All right, so the invocation this evening will be given by Pastor Mike Dawson, the great Mike Dawson from First Methodist Church and the Pledge of Allegiance by our city attorney. Didn't y'all just celebrate a hundred years this year?
Yes, sir, we sure did. Will you pray with me? Gracious God, it's good for us to be in this season to pause before we begin our business and give you thanks for the many blessings you bestowed on this great city. We thank you for the beautiful homes and neighborhoods all across the community. We thank you for the businesses and services which are available and so convenient. We thank you for the lovely parks and recreational areas which abound. We thank you for the wealth and prosperity of so many in this community. And we thank you for the leadership of this city, for the maintenance and support staff that make Colleyville the envy of so many other cities. We thank you for the police, firefighters, and emergency medical personnel who keep us safe. We know that with all these blessings come responsibilities. As Jesus said, "To whom much is given, much is required." Help us, God, to show our thanks by being good stewards of all your gifts and graces. Help us be sensitive, gracious, and generous to those who've not experienced the prosperity we enjoy. As you said to the prophet Isaiah, "If you offer your food to the hungry and satisfy the needs of the afflicted, then your light shall rise in darkness and your gloom be like noonday." The Lord will guide you continually. As this council meets, may your spirit be upon them. May their decisions be in accord with your will, and may your blessing continue to protect this community. Amen.
Thank you very much, thank you Pastor, we appreciate you being here and praying over our wonderful city. All right, we'd like to welcome everyone here this evening, and if anyone would like to speak, there's a half card in the back. If you would fill it out, please, and on there, make sure that you put the item number that you'd like to speak about, if you're for or against that item, or if you want to speak or you don't want to speak. When you get through, if you would, over to my left, the city secretary, Ms. Christine Loving, she will take that card and she'll hand it off to us. Now, I won't close any item out without asking if anybody would like to speak. So, if you didn't fill out a card and you would like to speak, I'll just say, hey, would you like to speak? And you just raise your hand, and then now my time's up. I'm done. Are we done? No, just kidding. We were practicing for George, is what it was. If you'd like to speak, you didn't get a card filled out, just raise your hand. I'll have you come up, just state your name and address, and then when you're through, please fill out the half card and turn it in to Ms. Christine Loving. So, also, just move that mic around to your face. It does, it does go left and right and forward and back. Speak into the mic, so you might hear yourself out there, but sometimes we can't hear you up here, so make sure you're into that mic. And again, state your name and address for us. All right, with that being said, I'm gonna move forward. We did have something that is coming out of executive session, and so it's gonna be Resolution R dash two-five dash five-zero-nine-five, a resolution approving city council action regarding executive session items at the regular city council meeting of November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Whereas following discussion in executive session, in full accordance with the requirements of the Open Meetings Act, the city council determines that the following action is in the best interest of health, safety, and welfare of the public. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Colleyville, Texas. Section one, that the city has received a letter of intent from Sanford P. Aaron Trustee and/or assigns incorporation DBA Huntington Properties to purchase our six-point-two-zero acres of city-owned property at four-zero-zero-seven Colleyville Boulevard, commonly known as the Colleyville Boulevard, and Acuff Lane, six acres. The city council authorizes the city manager or is designated to enter into the LOI. All right, so Assistant City Manager Mark Wood is gonna come up and talk about it.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. So, tonight, as the mayor mentioned, we received a letter of interest or an LOI from Huntington Properties. They're a retail developer, they've got properties in Texas and Florida, and they've submitted an LOI to the city to purchase the city-owned, it's around six acres at the southeast corner of Acuff and State Highway twenty-six. They propose retail development for that site. And so, this LOI is for twelve dollars and fifty cents a square foot, or three-point-one million dollars, a little bit over three-point-one million dollars. The city purchased this property back in two thousand and twenty-one for two-point-five-five million, or ten dollars and twenty-three cents per square foot. And so, this is the first step in the, kind of, that process. If this is approved tonight, then we would work with Huntington on a purchase-sell agreement, which would come back before the city council for consideration at that time. If that's approved, then we would be under contract with Huntington. Their proposed contract time is a hundred and fifty days for them to do their due diligence and come to the city council for zoning. All of this, of course, is contingent, as the city owns the property. All of the LOI and the PSA would be contingent upon receiving zoning entitlements from the city council, so we have ultimate control over the property. The city purchased this property, as well as the properties on the Northern Gateway, back in the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one timeframe, to control what happens with these, the two gateways to Colleyville in terms of encouraging quality commercial growth along our major entryways, so.
Okay, and Mark, what did we pay for that property?
Two-point-five-five million.
Two-point-five-five, and we're selling it for three-point-one more?
Three-point-one, just over three-point-one, yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions or concerns? All right, so, thank you, Mark. This wasn't on the agenda, and I'm, so I'm gonna open a public hearing. Public hearing is open, would anybody like to speak on this item? See, nobody wishes to speak, so I'm gonna close the public hearing, and I need a motion in a second.
A motion that we adopt, Resolution R dash two-five dash five-zero-nine-five.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion by Councilman Graves and a second by Councilman Alfonso. What's not working? Well, I think we've got some blank screens back here on Councilman Graves. Okay. Motion passes, seven-zero. Good job, Mark, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
So, we're gonna move into announcements and proclamations and presentations, and the first announcement I want to make is that Jerry Duquet has gone and had a facelift and looks like Adrian Loffey over here.
I like it better.
Assistant City Manager. And so, welcome to be by here, by me, and so you're gonna see what Jerry has to go through in keeping me in line, so I'm glad you're up here with me. Also, I also want to make an announcement. I want to provide an update to my fellow councilmembers and the community about a meeting I had with Grapevine Mayor Tate last Thursday. He requested the meeting, and we were joined by Colleyville City Manager Jerry Duquet and Grapevine City Manager Bruno Brumlo. Mayor Tate started the meeting by stating he hoped there was a way we could help GCISD keep schools open. He shared his concerns and ideas of how to avoid school closures. I shared my sadness with him to see the attendance numbers drop so low and the frustration that the state has not adequately addressed school funding and the serious harm caused by the recaptured dollars, leaving our school, that are leaving our school district. Mayor Tate suggested that I call School Board President Shannon Braun to see if we could slow down the process and find other possible ways to help with the district's financial needs. I agreed to call her and also reached out to our State Senator Tan Parker. I wanted to get the details and see what, if anything, could be done. Mayor Tate said that he could raise two million dollars from corporate donations to donate to the district. At the end of the meeting, Mayor Tate and I agreed to send a letter to the state asking for an oversight and information about those recaptured dollars, should there be any chance we could use some of the recaptured dollars to help ease GCISD's financial burden. Following my meeting with Mayor Tate, I had a lengthy conversation with President Shannon Braun, who explained in great detail why we are going through closures in our school district. With the attendance being down significantly and recaptured dollars being taken from our district, it's clear that our trustees are faced with some very difficult decisions to ensure the long-term financial sustainability of GCISD. These seven trustees have been working with the community members to do what is needed to avoid the state stepping in and taking over, like we've seen in Fort Worth. I also spoke with State Senator Tan Parker, and he fully recognizes the recapture issues. He's working to revamp education funding. He worked, he was working on it, to revamp education funding this last session, but unfortunately, it didn't reach the floor. He has committed to making it a major priority this next session. I did ask about withholding some of the recapture money and not making payments to the state. It never hurts to ask, right? But he advised that the district needs to make the recapture payment and do what is needed to survive at this present moment. I finished our conversation by saying it hurts to see other districts build new, advanced schools while we try to scrape up money to pay the light bills and replace old tiles in our aging schools. If we could just keep twenty percent of the thirty-six billion dollars that is leaving our district, both GCISD and the schools receiving the recaptured dollars could survive with breathing room. He fully agreed and again promised to work hard for us. He's been a good resource in the Texas Senate, and I fully believe he will go to bat for us. This is the entirety, this is the entirety of my recent meetings and follow-up actions related to the district's announcements of school closures. Just a couple days ago, apparently there was a meeting with parents and some of the Grapevine elected officials. There was a statement made by Grapevine City Councilmember Leon Leal about some sort of joint agreement letter coming out, coming out from Mayor Tate and me to try to save our schools from closure. Let's be clear, Leon was not present at my meeting with Mayor Tate, and his inaccurate and premature comments have led to confusion in the community. Let's be clear. We will not overpromise, nor do we have any authority over decisions to close schools in GCISD. We are here to give support and offer solutions if possible. If some sort of formal city council action were to be taken or discussed, and I'm not sure that that would, that it would be, it would occur at a public meeting of the full city council. To date, there is nothing scheduled to do so. Also, for clarity, this is a good one. There has been false statements claiming that I myself and Patriot Mobile are trying to shut down school buildings so that we can buy the property for pennies on the dollar. That's not true. I have had no conversation with any entity about closing our schools for personal gain, nor to purchase the property via city funds. Those are nothing more than wild conspiracy theories. I am sad that GCISD is having to consider closing schools. There's so much history and love for our beloved schools, but the data tells the story. Really, truly, we are victims of our own success. We have built a wonderful community with low taxes, a safe place to live, and as we age, no one wants to leave this oasis. That includes me, now an empty nester. Unfortunately, this makes it difficult for the district to remain financially sustainable if attendance hasn't declined so much. I believe the leadership of GCISD has done extensive homework and has left no stone unturned. But let's please remember that GCISD is its own entity and is operated by its own elected officials. We support the district, the trustees, and families as these difficult decisions are considered. Through these tough times and all the times ahead, the city remains a steadfast partner of GCISD. We're not the only ones going through this, folks. We were just, we were just told that Lewisville's closing down six. There's other school districts that are gonna be closing down, that are prominent, big school districts, that are gonna be closing down other schools right here close to us. And it's a tough one, and so I believe that they're doing the right thing. All right. So, with that being said, I'm gonna move on to where veterans receive the Congressional Medal. I had the honor of joining Congresswoman Van Dyne as we recognize exceptional Colleyville veterans. Congresswoman Van Dyne's office awarded First Sergeant Robert Hazelwood, United States Marine Corps, retired. Sergeant Eric Newton, United States Army, retired. And Captain James Palmer Sheen, United States, retired. A Congressional Veterans Commendation. In addition, three Colleyville Vietnam veterans were recognized with Vietnam Veteran lapel pins through a partnership with the United States of Americans Vietnam War Commerdations, sorry. These recipients include Sergeant John Bullard, United States Army, retired. Sergeant Alan Clements, United States Army, retired. And Staff Sergeant John Plowman, the United States Air Force, retired. These awards were presented during a veterans' recognition ceremony hosted by Congresswoman Van Dyne. I'm honored to have been, I'm honored to have been a part of this great event which recognized our exceptional heroes. I applaud the Congresswoman Van Dyne for her continued efforts to honor our area veterans and her dedication to preserving their legacy of service. Colleyville is proud to be home to many veterans who remain active in the community, continuing to lead and serve in countless ways. Their commitment to service both in and out of uniform continues to strengthen the fabric of Colleyville and inspire future generations. God bless all who have served our great nation. If you've served, will you raise your hand? I know you have, George, David, good. It's good to see you guys, thank y'all for your service.
Okay, join us this Saturday, November twenty-second, for the annual lighting of the Christmas tree outside Colleyville City Hall. The event runs from five-thirty to eight-thirty P. M. in the plaza and includes balloon artists, photos with Santa, food trucks, choir performances, and the Holly-Colly Express, made up of specialty drinks provided by local businesses and organizations. Remember to stop by and write your letter to Santa. There will be a magical mailbox on the steps of City Hall that Santa and Mrs. Claus will deliver when they come to see us at this event. Santa is even bringing his reindeer. The event will start with Santa and Mayor Lindemuth's arrival down Main Street at five-forty-five P. M. with the lighting of the tree to follow. Join us as we usher in the holiday season. Merry Christmas.
Now, those letters that go in, they respond, we respond, or Santa responds back, so make sure they get those in, so, cool.
I also have an update on the hotel development. Recently, ACM Wood and Manager Rose met on-site at the city's Northern Gateway property with the hotel resort developer, New City Capital, and their architecture and construction firm. The group reviewed concept plans, discussed site characteristics, and took an ATV tour of the property. New City Capital said that the feasibility study showed that the development could support a hotel in the upper upscale category, for example, the Drove or the Ven. The developer plans to revise the concept to reflect one-hundred-and-forty rooms total, eighteen casitas, which is down from twenty-three, a ten-thousand-square-foot conference center, parking deck, indoor restaurant, steakhouse, operated independently of the hotel, and a retail area with a Tex-Mex restaurant. We expect a project submittal in the next sixty to ninety days, at which time a formal rezoning process will ensue. That process will include multiple public hearings and forums with area residents, so there's more to come.
Cool.
And recently, while protecting a crew hanging Christmas lights on the south tower along Highway twenty-six, our new crash trailer was hit by a motorist. The trailer did its job perfectly and absorbed the full impact of the traffic accident. No workers were injured in the accident. The police department issued violation notices and insurance information was collected. The purchase of this essential safety equipment by this council has protected those working to make our community beautiful. For that, we are all grateful, thankful. And also, this year's Grapevine Veterans Day Parade honored Colleyville resident Lieutenant Colonel Bruce Stacy as a grand marshal. Bruce served over twenty years in the Army with two tours in the Vietnam War. I was honored to represent the Colleyville City Council at this event along with Councilmember Graves. The parade was well-tended by many veterans and local families, showing their respect and gratefulness for all those who have served. It was a privilege to honor our veterans in such a touching event. Thank you, Bruce, and all veterans for your service.
Field of Boot fundraiser update. The Colleyville Fire Department and Colleyville Firefighters Association, Local five-two-six-eight, are proud to announce that this year's fundraiser, Field of Boot, raised a total of ten-thousand, forty-six dollars and eighty-one cents in support of the Muscular Dystrophy Association. During the fundraiser, Colleyville firefighters were stationed at the intersection of Glade Road and Bransford Road, where they collected donations from passing drivers. This event is part of a nationwide effort by firefighters to help individuals and their families impacted by muscular dystrophy. The Colleyville Fire Department and Colleyville Firefighters Association are proud to support these families through Field of Boot. Every dollar raised helps fund life-saving research, critical care, and life-enriching programs that make a real difference. The department extends a heartfelt thank you to all of the community members who donated and supported this effort. Next, I want to talk about the CRASE training. North Texas Chiefs and North Texas Crime Commission are again working together to broaden the availability of the civilian response to active shooter events, C-R-A-S-E, training throughout the DFW Metroplex. Thirty agencies provide this training in June, and we had over fifty attendees in our session. We will host this training again on Saturday, November twenty-second, from ten A. M. to two P. M. at the Colleyville Library on the second floor. This free course provides guidance, strategies, and a proven plan for surviving an active shooter event. To register for the event, please go to the website, http colon forward slash forward slash B I T dot L Y forward slash one-one-two-five C R A S E.
Okay, gift cards are once again in the mail. Check your mail, the Colleyville thirty-five-dollar gift card should have arrived at your home. Keep an eye out for yours. Each Colleyville household will receive a thirty-five-dollar gift card for purchases at participating restaurants and commercial retail businesses within our city. The city is also partnering with the Ministerial Alliance in distributing fifty-dollar Colleyville Care gift cards to families in need. The gift card can be presented at participating Colleyville businesses for payment of services. Gift cards are valid through January eleventh, two thousand and twenty-six. Please call the city manager's office with any questions at eight-one-seven-five-zero-three-one-one-one-one. For more information and a list of participating businesses, visit colleyville.com forward slash support business. And on the same note, business bingo. Love Colleyville, shop Colleyville. Put your money where your heart is this holiday season. Participate in our business bingo by supporting our local Colleyville businesses. Pick up a bingo card. Cards will be available for residents with an I. D. at the Colleyville Center, five-three-zero-one Riverwalk Drive, Monday, November twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five, through Friday, January ninth, two thousand and twenty-six. Monday through Friday, eight to five, excluding city holidays. Colleyville Shopping Bags are also available in limited supplies when cards are picked up. One bingo card per resident. With card in hand, shop local Colleyville businesses and keep your receipts to turn in with your bingo card. Participants can win up to two thirty-five-dollar gift cards. For questions or more information, contact the Colleyville Center at eight-one-seven-five-zero-three-one-three-three-zero.
Leaf recycling program begins November twenty-second. Special, special leaf and Christmas tree recycling collections will return this winter. Community Waste Disposal, CWD, Colleyville's trash and recycling provider, will run special collection routes to recycle bagged leaves starting in November. This year's program includes five collection days. Saturday, November twenty-second, December sixth, December thirteenth, December twentieth, and January third, with collections beginning at eight A. M. CWD will also collect and recycle Christmas trees on the January special collection day. Residents are asked not to enclose the tree in a plastic sack or bag and to remove all tinsel, stands, and tree decorations. To participate, residents just need to set out leaves on the designated collection days. CWD will recycle leaves contained in either a paper lawn craft bag or plastic bag. CWD will recycle leaves contained in either a paper lawn craft bag or plastic bag. If leaf bags are set out prior to the Saturday collections, residents are asked to place leaf bags separately from household trash. With that in mind, residents should be aware of and comply with their homeowners' association policies. Regular rear-load garbage trucks will be used for these special collection days. If you have any questions or would like more information, please call 817-503-1111.
The holidays with their fried turkeys, buttery foods, and gravy can be hard on your diet and on the pipes and sewer systems.
What a great read.
When fats, oils, and greases are washed down the drain, they stick to the inside of pipes, hardening and building up until they cause clogs and sewer backups. This can cause sewage overflow into homes, streets, and local waterways. Whether the repairs are in your home or in the street, it can be costly and inconvenient. If the sewer overflows, city crews have to shut down streets, tying up traffic and increasing expenses for both residents and the city. Instead of washing your grease down the drain, participate in the 2025 Holiday Grease Roundup and recycle it for free. The city of Colleyville is partnering with the North Texas Municipal Water District, the North Central Texas Council of Governments, the Wastewater and Treatment Education Roundtable, and American Biosource to help protect sewer systems and the environment by providing a drop-off location to collect your holiday grease. The collected cooking oil and grease will be recycled into biodiesel or biogas, which reduces landfill waste and produces an alternative fuel that is clean and green. Cooking grease and oil will be collected at the Colleyville Public Works Facility located at 1601 Hall Johnson Road from Monday, November 17th through Thursday, January 29th. Collection hours are 7:30 AM to 3:45 PM, Monday through Thursday. There will be no collections on Fridays, weekends, or city holidays.
All right, cool. Any other announcements?
I think tomorrow, this is not city-led, it's citizen-led. There'll be a sign-up if you'd like to help out with carrying food to the police department or the fire departments. It's been out there for a few years, and so I think it comes out tomorrow. It'll be on some of the, not the city websites or pages, it'll be on some of the community pages. All you gotta do is click in, and if you'd like to bring rolls or turkeys or this or that, and I know Chief back there enjoys all of it that you're bringing, especially the cookies, right?
Chiefs.
Said gravy.
Yeah, gravy. All right, so with that being said, thank you. We're gonna move forward with number four, which is a consent reading and public hearing of Resolution R-25-5096, approving city council action under consent items at the regular city council meeting of November 18th, 2025. Whereas, the city council has taken action on certain items on the agenda under consent items. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Colleyville, Texas. Section one, that the agenda decisions approved by the city council action under consent items as follows are hereby adopted. A, approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting of November 5th, 2025. B, approval of professional services agreement with Park Hill Smith &amp; Cooper, Inc., DBA Park Hill for design of the voting center and splash park project, and authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement. C, approval of rejecting all bills for the Colleyville Center, rejecting all bids for the Colleyville Center Windows Replacement Project. Man, I cannot read tonight. D, casting the city's eight ballots for the election of the Tarrant Appraisal District Board of Directors. Boy. All right, so it's resolved. So any questions over the last week, or two weeks ago, the meeting? Okay.
No, but I would like to reject all bills as well.
Yeah.
Not just the bills.
I was like, what am I? I'm breezing too fast right now, I guess. All right, so none of that. So we're gonna go into B, Ms. Lisa Escobedo.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Lisa Escobedo, Director of Public Works. And this first item is the professional services agreement with Park Hill Smith &amp; Cooper, Inc., also known as Park Hill, for the design of the voting center and splash pad project. This PSA provides the professional architectural and engineering design services for this project. The city did complete a request for qualifications for specific services for this project. We did receive five submittals from various firms. Based on a review of the submitted statements of qualifications, as well as an interview with the different firms, staff is recommending Park Hill to prepare the architectural and engineering design and construction for this project. They have considerable experience with municipal facilities, specifically a voting facility, as well as various splash pads and playgrounds of various capacities. And this project was included in the FY26 CIP.
Okay, yeah. And just for clarity, this was not part, we said this before, I'm gonna say it again, this was not a part of the bond that was voted on. This was already set in stone and already had the money for the back building that we were gonna redo and the splash pad and stuff, so.
Correct.
Make sure that the public knew that. Okay, any questions? All right, we're gonna move on to the next one. You got that one, too.
Okay, yes. This is for the approval of rejecting the bids for the Colleyville Center Window replacement project. As you remember, this project was approved on October the 8th, and staff soon thereafter met with the contractor at the site, had various meetings with them. It was quickly evident that the contractor was concerned with the timeframe that was allocated for this project and completing the project in a timely manner. So staff has deemed the contract non-viable due to the long lead time of the fabrication of the windows, in addition with the availability of the Colleyville Center and the amount of time that was allocated for that project to be completed. So there was three bids, three sealed bids for that project. One was found non-responsive due to the lack of bid bonds. And then the third was the highest bidder, and it was over $400,000, so it was well over what was allocated for that project. So therefore, staff is requesting council approve the rejection of all three bids that were submitted. Therefore, staff will prepare an updated bid package and rebid the project in the spring for construction in the summer. This will allow for a longer lead time for fabrication of the windows, as well as making sure that the Colleyville Center is blocked out within plenty of time for the project to be completed appropriately.
Okay. Any questions?
I've got one, Mayor. In the spec bid, I'm concerned about quality, because sometimes the lowest price, I mean, these windows, I don't know how long they've been there, probably 35 years or something. Anyway, you know, quality is important for the long term. So in the spec, is there a specification for the quality part of the windows that we don't just take the cheapest bid?
We can definitely add this in the next bid package, for sure.
Yeah, because I know there's a difference in windows. Anyone that's redone their house knows different quality. And I just want to make sure we get some good windows in there that last the same amount of term.
Yes, and we'll get with our consultant as well and make sure that that's included.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you, Ms. Lisa. Appreciate you. All right. City Secretary.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Christine Levin, City Secretary. It's time to provide our eight votes for electing someone to the Tarrant Appraisal District Board of Directors. We had put forth the nomination of Mike Alfred. He is one of the four that you can cast your ballots for. So we have Mike Alfred, Wendy Burgess, Eric Krill, and Sayeda Sayed. We do have to cast these ballots and notify Tarrant County by the Tarrant Appraisal District, not Tarrant County, by next week. So when you're making this consideration and you go to move so tonight on the consent agenda, would you advise the names and name or names and the number of votes which you wish to cast?
Okay.
Can I answer any questions? I will say, I don't want this to be confused with, there will be another item that will come at our next meeting, and this will be to appoint someone to fill a vacancy at Tarrant Appraisal District. These are two separate items, so we need to take care of the casting our ballots first.
Correct. Thank you so much. Okay, any questions on any of it? Okay, if not, I'm gonna open a public hearing. Public hearing is now open. We have no cards. Anybody want to speak? See, nobody wishes to speak, so I'm gonna close the public hearing. Oh, did I miss you? I'm gonna open it back up.
I didn't.
That's all right. No worries. Former Councilman George Dodson.
George Dodson, I live in 7309 Baltimore Drive. I have attended the TAD Board meeting for over six years, watching, you know, the events there, and also seeing what happened with the past chief appraiser. It was a very bad situation. My personal recommendation would be for Mike Alfred. He's been a solid person on the board. He's also completely, he led the complete revision of their standard operating procedures, and that had never been done. So the board was actually only operating legally since that was in place, which has been about a month. So that's my recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? See, nobody else wishes to speak, so I'm gonna close the public hearing, and so...
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution R-25-5096.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead. You have it.
In that the city casts its eight ballots for Mike Alfred.
One second.
Okay, got a motion by Mayor Protem Elder and a second by Deputy Mayor Protem Richardson, with Mike Alfred in it. Ben, are you having to give the thumbs up over there, buddy?
Yeah.
All right, so the motion passes 7-0.
You're doing this secret.
Not letting us know until the very end, right? All right. Monthly financial report, Ms. Cassie.
Good evening, Mayor and Council and citizens out there watching. This is the monthly financial report for October 2025. It's the first period of the new fiscal year, fiscal year 2026. I'm currently in multiple dates, so, you know, it'll be great. Everything looks a little negative in general fund right now, but that's nothing to be concerned about. It's our property taxes are our largest source of revenues, and they usually get collected more heavily in December and January. So we're in, compared to the prior year, we're right in line with where we usually are. Again, property taxes, we haven't collected anything in the month of October, so. Sales tax, this is the full month for all sales for the whole fiscal year of 2025, and we were up 4.25, which is fantastic when we compare it to the previous year. So just a comparative of where we are, we're right in line, kind of looking a little bit on an uptick at the moment, and hopeful to continue strong in future months. Compared to our surrounding cities, we are up 3.47, and that year-to-date is from the previous year to this year, not on a fiscal year basis. It's just a continuous year-to-date. Utilities fund, again, the revenues are a month lag, so that's looking a little low, but it'll turn around. So drainage fund, looking good at this point. A little low on the budget side. Some of it, so we have auditors in, we've been accruing things back, so all of our numbers are still a little confused where the previous year already had their audit numbers in. So hotel occupancy fund, we had budgeted to use up some of that fund balance reserve, so that's why that negative is on the budget. But again, those are quarterly collections, and we have not gotten the first quarter yet. Debt service, we've had to make some payments, but the revenues are property tax revenues, so those have not come in yet. And that's it, sorry. Any questions?
Any questions? Okay, well, let's begin, let's...
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we're gonna move forward to the second reading and public hearing of Ordinance 0-25-2351, An Ordinance Approving an Amendment Project and Financing Plan for the Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Number One, City of Colleyville, Texas, Making Various Findings Related to Such Plan, Providing for Severability and Providing an Effective Date. All right, Assistant City Manager, Mark Wood.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and City Council. Again, with this item, I'm gonna kind of introduce it and hand it off to David Pettitt, our TIF consultant, who's with us tonight for the final time. I feel like this is the seventh or eighth time we've discussed this. So pretty much have it memorized by now, and you can probably remember the slides as they were. But this discussion really began this past summer with the council's visioning session. We talked about possibly extending the TIF and wanting the staff to look into what that process would be, and so we're kind of at the conclusion of that tonight. We have had multiple work sessions on this. We've approved the actual extension of time of the TIF by 25 years to 2055, the council has. And so this item tonight is to amend the project and financing plans associated with that extension of time. And again, this is for the city portion only of our TIF. This does not include any of our current participating partners, so this is city-only. We extended the time, and we also extended some of the boundaries. And so by doing that, the city will be able to collect the increment on the tax revenue for those additional boundaries, and also be able to conduct projects within those boundaries as well. So the senior center, the rec center, several road projects, and you'll see the map here in a minute that you've seen several times, where before we couldn't do projects because they weren't in our TIF boundary, but now they are, and so we can conduct projects within those boundaries with the additional tax revenue that the city will receive through 2055. And so the TIF has been very instrumental in the city and our success with infrastructure, with economic development projects, the State Highway 26 beautification, the entryway towers, the median beautification, a lot of road reconstruction projects, beautification throughout the city, as well as our gift card program that Councilmember Gunderson read about earlier in the announcements, is funded through our TIF. And so a lot of projects where we partner with our businesses to beautify their buildings and locations is funded through TIF. So it's been very successful and very instrumental in allowing the city to accomplish a lot of things. And so tonight, we would look to amend the project and financing plan, and this will be the final reading on that. So with that, I'll hand it off to David, just to kind of go through these slides one last time.
David.
Mayor, members of council, thank you so much. I think Mark stole my thunder here. This is probably the seventh or eighth time, but this is your final action, so I'll kind of make it painless as we kind of walk through. I do want to mention that there's two major steps. I call it the Texas Two-Step, but in Colleyville, because we require two readings, it's the Four-Step. So you've completed the first of two steps, which is, as Mark mentioned, the extending of the term and the extending of the boundary. And then we have the Project and Financing Plan Amendment, which is really just kind of outlines a menu of how you're gonna spend this money. And so you've done that once, and this is the final of that. So it's really the Texas Four-Step. So we expanded the boundaries with the expanded boundaries of a 2025-year base year, extended the term to expire in 25 years from 2030 to December 31st, 2055. No change in city participation. We are in some discussions with Tarrant County College regarding their participation. And another important partner in this is Grapevine Colleyville ISD, has been a great partner in the TIF to date. And so we're here today to talk about the amendment, the final amendment to the project and financing plan to update the projections and the increase in cost. So there's two reasons that you draw a boundary. One is to capture increment, and another is to spend increment. So I think, working with staff, we've done a good job of capturing the increment. You can see in the main corridor where we're capturing a lot of that increment, then also drawing some areas to where we can spend those dollars. So I know it's a little bit of spaghetti thrown against the wall, but there's some intentionality behind that. And I think that, as Mark mentioned, the TIF has served. As I drove in, seeing the monument signing, the lights, and the landscaping, it's wonderful. And also to hear the gift cards, just a wonderful program that we put together here. So with the participation terminating on December 31st of 2055, 100% of the real property increment going into the zone. Previously, we had the TIF at about $44 million. Previously, we had the TIF at about $44 million. This increases the budget to $147 million. Once again, this is projected, but we feel this is a conservative projection. I do want to mention that, so the city's piece of that is about $116 million. We do have Tarrant County College money coming in at 3.3 and Grapevine Colleyville ISD at $27 million. So this is truly a public-private partnership, so the city's not carrying these costs alone. And so these other jurisdictions are helping pay for those improvements that we see every day. So with that 147, what we like to do is, because we don't know what we don't know, is put this into categories that are of eligible project and financing plan and have two mother may ayes as we kind of go forward. As money's available, we say mother may I to the TIF Board and then mother may I to the City Council. And so you can see that it's allocated across all potential Chapter 311 eligible project cost. I'd like to draw your attention to roadway improvements, making the bulk of it, and also economic development grants, which allows for the gift cards and the other programs that we have. So completed to date, on November the 5th, the TIF Board recommended approval of the amended project and financing plan. We had our first reading of this second step or fourth step, however you want to look at it, considering the ordinance approving the amended project and financing plan, and we have our final step. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions that we haven't gotten the last several meetings that you haven't soaked in? I think we can do your presentation yourself.
You could probably do it yourself.
You guys have done a wonderful job, and thank you for helping us out.
Thank you.
Through 2020, or 2055, so.
Mayor, could I just, real quick? Because I know school financing is a big topic now, and the school part up until 2030, how does the school get the money? They get the full amount that you showed on the spreadsheet without Robin Hood, is that correct?
Correct, so.
Okay.
Prior to 1999, school districts were allowed to participate. After 1999, there weren't, so we're fortunate in that we have their participation to 2030, and we're actually passing that through, and we're helping with a lot of additional demands that are put on the city or on the school district, including strategic resource officers and others. And so it's a, it's a win-win for the overall city and community.
Good, I just want to make a point of that, it was, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you all very much.
Public hearing, public hearing is open, we have no cards. Anybody want to speak? See, nobody wishes to speak, so I'm going to close the public hearing. I want to need a motion and a second, please.
I'll make a motion that we pass Ordinance 0252351.
Second.
Was that Tim? Okay, got a motion by Councilwoman Gunderson and a second by Councilman Reins. Did you give your cigarette vote, Ben?
I did.
All right, motion passes seven zero. Good job, Council, it's been a long one through that, and thank you guys for helping us out, go through it. We appreciate you guys. All right, Ben, I think you're going to recuse yourself in this one. All right, while they're taking care of business over there, I'm going to go ahead and read this. This is a second reading in public hearing of Ordinance 0-25-2352, amending Ordinance 0-18-2056, providing a penalty of fine not to exceed the sum of $2,000 and providing an effective date. All right, so there's actually been an, there's been a request to table this to, to future date, but somebody would have to make a motion to do that? And anybody want to make a motion to table this? Okay, I see nobody wishes to make a motion to table this, so we're going to move forward. We need a staff presentation by Ben, I believe.
Thank you, Ben Briner, Director of Community Development. This is a request to appeal the decision by the Planning and Zoning Commission for consideration of an amendment to a planned unit development residential district within the Oak Alley subdivision, which is generally at 1312 John McCain Road. There is a supermajority vote that will be required, and that's based on the recommendation of denial through the Planning and Zoning Commission. This is an aerial photo of the property, some different perspectives, and this is a closer view. So the request identifies the entire subdivision. However, specifically, the request is to remove a 25-foot landscape easement that was approved as part of the original planned unit development zoning, specifically for this property at 7313 Callaway Court. It's jumping around on me. So this is a blow-up of the development plan that was approved. The green there on the side is a landscape easement that was identified, 25 feet in width, and it ran along the entire east boundary of the subdivision. And this is the plat, on the left-hand side is the plat, and I've circled where they did dedicate that 25-foot landscape easement on the plat. And then on the right, this is a survey that shows the improvements that were made specifically for the house, and supers, or superimposed on that is a pool plan that the applicants are requesting to, to build. The purpose of this is to allow for encroachment or removal of that easement to allow for the construction of the pool. The request is to remove the easement completely, but only for this lot specifically. And we've highlighted that 25-foot landscape easement, and you can see how that impacts the backyard. Here's some photos that were provided by the applicant to try and demonstrate the issue that they're dealing with in the backyard. And this is just another site exhibit identifying the proposal for the pool, and that dash line cutting across is the limits of that 25-foot landscape easement. Here's some different renderings of the improvement as well. So the proposed language, everything will remain except in the open space section, adding a statement that the 25-foot landscape easement will not be required specific, this is specifically for Lot 14 located at 7313 Callaway Court. Every other aspect of the approved zoning ordinance will remain, except for that one modification, if approved. We did send our notices out to surrounding property owners, to everyone within 500 feet. We did receive several responses back, some of which I believe came in even this week, which may not be highlighted on here. We did calculate the opposition, which is only calculated within 200 feet. It is below the 20% threshold for, for requiring a supermajority vote. Staff is neutral on this request. The Planning and Zoning Commission did hear this at their October 13th meeting, and they did recommend denial by a vote of five to two. That does trigger the supermajority vote. If they appeal to the City Council, what that means is a favorable vote of three-fourths of all members of the City Council is required for approval, given that there's seven. Six affirmative votes would be required to meet that 75% percentage number. And with that, I can try and answer any questions?
You need six out of six, correct? Because we don't.
In this case, six out of six.
Okay. Okay. Any questions for Ben? All righty. So I think Mr. Ryan had some stuff he wanted to show overhead. If you'll state your name and address for the record, please.
Ryan Raybold, 7313 Callaway Court.
Click on that floor. Yep, that's it.
Good evening, City Councilmember, my name is Rob Slovak. I'm with the law firm of Foley and Lardner in Dallas, and I represent the Raybolds. Proud to say that I have known the Raybolds for close to a decade. Regrettably, from my perspective, they decided to move to Colleyville when they came back to Texas instead of moving closer to us in Dallas. But for that reason, they chose Colleyville because they perceived it to be a family-friendly, cordial environment for them to raise their five kids. And that's really why we're here today, but there's a lot in the backstory. And while I appreciate that this council, this is the second reading, and that you're familiar with some of the facts, I thought it would be important to reorient you to some of those facts and then talk about some new facts that we've learned that I think this council should take under consideration before they render a decision to ensure that the process itself is fair and the application to law is not done in an arbitrary and capricious sort of way. As an initial matter, the question before this City Council is, will you deny the Raybold kids a swimming pool? It really is that simple. There's been much made about whether this is a larger issue. There are arguments that we'll talk about in a minute about it being a slippery slope. Those are factually incorrect under this particular circumstance. This is a isolated request related to one lot that is uniquely situated in a, in a circumstance where they will be the only applicant that will make any such request. And so this is not, as many have said, some big magnanimous precedent-setting kind of a situation. It's the application of common sense and making a decision in a way that is not arbitrary and capricious or influenced improperly, which we'll talk about here in a moment. So the Raybolds have gone to great lengths to work with architects to assess the best and only possible place for this pool. The council has been submitted through the planning and zoning process and through the record. Before the council, the pool renderings would show what the architects reject, what recommended pool structure is and how that's situated in the yard. The analysis from the architects determined that the only viable location is behind the Raybold House, which, as designed because of the uniquely situated lot of the Raybolds, would encroach on the existing landscape easement in the, in the PUD. The PUD landscape easement prevents the Raybolds essentially from making use of their backyard because it is so uniquely situated. It's narrow, such that the easement itself swallows up a significant portion of the backyard. You all have already seen the evidence on that issue. As shown in, in the particular schematic, it would cover half of the pool that the Raybold, Raybold seek to install. If, if they follow through the plan, the only way to feasibly fit the pool in the backyard, it would be, for it to be so unreasonably narrow that it would be either too close to the house to follow existing recommendations for pools, would be completely unusable, and would frankly just be a waste of money. The pool can't be put in the side yard, as many folks have indicated. And by the way, I think the council knows this, but there's a drainage and utility easement that's at seven and a half feet. The plan that's proposed by the Raybolds does not interfere with that utility easement at all. And we're going to talk more about this in a minute, the council has heard it. But the documents, what they really only say is that no accessory structure can be built in this circumstance. No other prohibitions exist, which as a matter of Texas law is significant and will have a significant impact on the decision that this City Council has to make. But what's the effect of the easement, and why is it that they can't put this pool on the side of the house like some have suggested? You've heard unsubstantiated arguments from citizens at the prior reading that somehow they could put a pool in the side yard. However, you've seen absolutely no evidence that that's feasible. Okay, I'm going to repeat that. People standing up and saying they believe it's feasible is not some kind of evidence that it is feasible. And in fact, the only evidence before this panel is that the architect that's made the recommendation has indicated that the only feasible place to put this pool is in the backyard. And why? Because behind the home, it preserves the landscaping and the trees in the side yard. The parents can see their kids from the home in the back patio. They'll have privacy behind the home. It's consistent placement in the neighborhood, requires less grading, it's further away from the neighbors, and it increases the property value. By contrast, under the hypothetical scenario that's been posited by some of the citizens with no substantiation of all, at all, putting it on the side of the home would require cutting down trees, would obstruct the parent's view, would, would ensure, ensure that the fence doesn't block the view. It would be an outlier in the rest of the neighborhood, require more grading, it would be right on top of the neighbor's yard. It would also decrease the property value. Almost all of the 34 neighbors in the subdivision of Oak Alley support the Raybold pool. More than a dozen have written letters showing their support. And to highlight just a few, some of the comments that have been made by the neighbors that granting this variance would reinforce Colleyville's reputation as a city that prioritizes family and thoughtful community living. I'll talk more about that in a minute, but that seems particularly resonant at a time when your opening session was a discussion about what do we do to prevent ourselves from shutting down schools in this city. One of the other comments from the neighbors is that the request is modest, reasonable, and keeping with the spirit of our community. The people in the Oak Valley community have supported and continue to support the Raybolds, including another comment saying it would reflect Colleyville's commitment to fairness, family values, and thoughtful community living. These comments should be persuasive and overly persuasive against those comments of the folks in the Tanglewood subdivision who have offered no real reasonable rational basis for why putting a swimming pool that has no adverse impact of any kind on those property, on those people's property. Significantly, in this particular circumstance, no one is adversely impacted if they get their pool. It's going to sit lower in the yard, backs up to a driveway and open space, would preserve the trees and landscaping. The perimeter wall, which you have seen photographs of, protects against visual interference. It shields against noise, reflects that noise back against their house. And as the heir to the former landowner told the City Council in the last meeting, we're in a really strange place in the City of Colleyville. If we're making decisions to deny a family a swimming pool because we're worried about the kids making noise in their backyard, that's irrational and certainly not a reason to reject the request under the circumstances. Neither Tanglewood nor the actual Oak Alley residents would be adversely impacted by this request in any form or fashion. Neither the, the, the final plat nor the PUD prevent a pool within this landscape easement. The only relevant prohibitions, and we'll look at those again in a second, are against accessory structures, gates, and other public utility easements. And Texas law has a favorable reading on behalf of the property owners. Covenants are restricted only where they're clearly worded. Cited to some cases here, you all are free to read that or have your city attorney read those cases. Doubts regarding restrictive covenants are resolved in favor of the free and unrestricted use of land. And any ambiguity in those covenants, the language in the covenants, if it's not abundantly clear, and in this circumstance, landscape's not defined, no one at the city has adhered to any requests or responded to any requests to describe what, what landscape means. It's not defined in the ordinances, it's not defined in the statutes. It's a word that the City Council and those involved in the process chose to use without giving it any definition, without indicating what they intended to prohibit, and where they chose to insert prohibitions in other portions of the very same ordinance and exclude, exclude them here. That drafting peculi, peculiarity will be read against the drafters, and the courts will read those in favor of the property owners. Don't take my word for it, you can read the cases that we cited. We're going to talk more in a moment about a case that involved the zoning commission in the City of Houston, I'm sorry, in the City of Piney Ridge, that went up on appeal where, in a circumstance substantially similar to this, the landowners sought to put a pool into their backyard. The zoning authority denied that request, and it was summarily overturned because the decision was arbitrary and capricious by the Houston Court of Appeals in the First District. Here, the only prohibition in the PUD concerning Lot 14 is that it'll have no accessory structures. That's a defined term, you all can read it and apply your own common sense. But the pool that they seek to install in their backyard is not an accessory structure, and it's not a building. And again, under the circumstances where there are express prohibitions and no definition of what's prohibited in this particular circumstance, this reading is going to fall in favor of the landowners. So there's another problem with this particular request and the, and the action of the City Council to deny it, and that is if you deny this. And that is, if you deny this request, there's a problem because you have two sets of rules in this particular circumstance. The Bottick's property in Tanglewood, which Mr. Bottick admits himself, encroaches upon the same landscape easement at issue. He's built a structure that clearly satisfies the accessory structure definition, that protrudes over the top of the wall, that clearly impacts the intended purpose, as he himself has tried to articulate, is the intended purpose of the landscape easement. And in correspondence with Mr. Raybold, the city manager has indicated that is my belief that the structures in question are located within the landscape easement. It's going to leave some open questions if you vote against the Raybolds and allow this to continue. What did you know about this and when did you know it? When he didn't apply for a permit, what sort of enforcement action should have been taken against him? And if you aren't applying the sets of rules equally to parties affected by the application and not doing it based on the specific facts before you, then that decision itself is one that is not founded in fact or law and it is arbitrary and capricious. We would suggest to you that that is what is happening in this circumstance. You heard some evidence at the first reading and there was some argument made to this effect at the Planning and Zoning Commission that really boils down to three primary points of opposition. You've heard argument that it was really hard work to get the landscape easement. My response to that and the simple response to that is, so what? It's not to tell you that putting that work in wasn't important, but that is not a justification for denying a rational, common-sense exception that has no adverse impact on other residents within the community under the circumstances. If the city council had an intent to actually preclude a swimming pool, you could have written it into the ordinance. You should have written it into the ordinance. What you intended and what was in your head that doesn't manifest itself in the public record itself is not the decision. That's not what should be analyzed. If you want to adhere to the point, the value of the community for transparency, you put those words in it and the courts will tell you that the failure to describe the situation, the failure to provide some sort of interpretation about what was meant for the application or to otherwise define that issue is a problem for the city council. One of the other arguments is that the letter of intent that was signed between the landowners at Tanglewood and the prior owner say that this was supposed to be open space. As one of the citizens raised a point in the first hearing, as I'll reiterate now, the answer to that question in this particular circumstance is that it doesn't impact the decision to city council. A private agreement between private citizens is something that they can enforce. It's not something the city council has standing to enforce. That itself is a red herring, just as we say it is that it was hard work to get the landscape easement in place. The third argument primarily has been that if you allow this amendment, then everyone else is going to put pools in and evade the landscape easement. The unique circumstances of this lot and the unique circumstances of the rest of the community, if you look at the aerial photographs, most of them have pools, those that don't have plenty of space to put them in without some encroachment on the easement. This is a fact-specific, unique circumstance. It is exactly the kind of circumstance that you should consider those facts and narrowly carve out an exception. If you narrowly carve out an exception in a unique set of circumstances, it is not a precedent that creates a slippery slope. Again, that argument, in my humble opinion, is a red herring and not one that should carry the day for this city council to adhere to its responsibility under the circumstances. Couple of other things that you heard at the first reading of this ordinance is that somehow the Raybolds knew that there was a builder replication or rendition of a swimming pool. I haven't seen any evidence of that, certainly none that's been presented here. The Raybolds didn't see it as part of their rendition and the only evidence before this panel from the Raybold submission from the architect is that the only place that this pool can reasonably be placed is in the backyard, encroaching on the landscape easement, which is why they need the variance from the ordinance, the amendment to the PUD, the narrowly tailored amendment to the PUD. The Raybolds have done all the necessary and appropriate diligence to determine that there's only one spot to put the pool with minimal disruption. There was also some discussion about the Raybolds intending to put a sport court on their property. We'll talk more about this in a minute, but there is a lot of new evidence that came out today in a response to an open records request when 709 documents were dropped in our lap at 5:00 this afternoon. But in those communications between members of the Planning and Zoning Commission and members of this city council, there's lots of discussion about the Raybolds' social media. And I'm going to read from a couple of those in a moment, but I think that an objective reading of those communications is important for this city council before you render a decision because you want to make sure that the process here is fair and that it's not being influenced unreasonably. And what those communications indicate and what the hearing arguments indicate is that people are taking as truth things that users are saying on Reddit about social media accounts of the Raybolds. Your decisions should not be made based on the opinions of third parties of the Raybolds. They should not be made based on opinions of the members of the Planning and Zoning Commission about the Raybolds and what they do on their social media account to post about their lives. It should not be influenced by bias against them. It should be a decision that is made based on the language of the PUD, based on the lack of prohibitions in the PUD, and based on a fair and reasonable application of the law. I would suggest to you that the record reflects that the decision you should make here is in their favor. And I mentioned to you the case of the Board of Adjustments of the City of Piney Ridge Village versus the Solar School Crossings case. And in that particular circumstance, it was an application made to a board of zoning authority for the use of a pool. And the evidence that was submitted was that it was for private use, there was no adverse impact, that it would be consistent with city values and consistent with the Texas landowner protection in the fair and free use of their rights. The Board of Authority denied that application and the Court of Appeals overturned it as one that was arbitrary and capricious. And under that circumstance, the facts were not even nearly as favorable to the applicant nor was the record filled with evidence of members of the Planning and Zoning Commission openly lobbying members of the city council to make decisions against the Raybold and cheering on members of the city council who expose the social media accounts of the Raybolds. And so I want to talk to you about a couple of these particular communications, just so that you all have a fair and reasonable assessment of what I am saying in this circumstance. There are communications from former members of the Planning and Zoning Commission to current members of the Planning and Zoning Commission lobbying that member of the Planning Commission to steer the commission in a particular direction. There are communications from, what I understand to be someone who has recently or will soon step off of the Planning and Zoning Commission, sending social media posts indicating that they have spoken with city council members specifically to lobby them and say, he's a no and I'm going to go to the second reading hearing before they vote. There are communications with current members of the city council congratulating members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, saying, I'm disappointed Witt wasn't here. Nice job on exposing their social media. And responses saying that they're still grieving. I submit to you that you should carefully consider those communications before you render a decision in this circumstance because I don't think that they reflect a fair and unbiased process. And one of the things that was mentioned at the last hearing was that above all that you should value integrity of the board and the process. And I would respectfully submit to this committee that you should value the integrity of the process and that people lobbying behind the scenes because they're frustrated with somebody's social media is not respecting the integrity of the process. But I also would say that there are other particular concerns that implicate the values of the city, like communication. The Raybolds have repeatedly asked, give us a reasonable interpretation of what you mean by landscape. Tell us, how do you work with us to make this process happen? And that's been stonewalled. One of the other values of the city is excellence. And if lobbying communications that show personal grievances against the Raybold on their social media is what the city council believes demonstrates excellence, I would suggest to you that that's not correct. And more importantly, one of the values is transparency. And if the intent was to restrict the building of a swimming pool within a landscape easement or within a PUD, then I would suggest to you that to adhere to the value of transparency, that's what it should have said. And if it didn't say it, then citizens can't understand in any transparent fashion what is intended. So I ask you again, when you answer this question, will you deny the Raybold kids a pool? Ask yourself other questions. Does the council want to send the message that it's not a family-friendly community? Does the council want to send a message that it's hostile to private property rights because of what I would suggest are past and outdated concerns? Does the council want to send the message to future builders and residents that they will be adversely impacted by the subjective intent of council members that they can't ascertain through any public source, that they can't get an answer to when they submit those questions to the city? I would suggest to you that that's not how the decision should be made. A reasonable application of the facts to this particular circumstance says no one is adversely impacted. They will build a pool. It will be a landscape feature. It will not be unsightly and their children will be able to enjoy their property, which is one of the reasons that they moved here, to enjoy their property, to be active participants in the social process and to build a better Colleyville. Thank you for your time. Would you like to add anything, Ryan?
I've got a question that I need to ask the city attorney and I'm going to go into executive session. We'll go over to the left because Ben's on the right.
One of my drivers just had, told me they, he took off today because they were having a baby and they just had a baby, eight pounds. This dude's like, six-six, three-hundred pounds, he's a big old boy, yeah. He's a, uh, black Tongan mixed guy, and so, he's just dark and this and that, and he's a good-looking dude, man, I'm like, God dang, man, what's you come for? And drive a truck for me? He's got this long wavy hair. Soon as everybody gets a chance to go to the restroom at the council, we'll, we'll get it started, so, give us just a few more minutes, please.
I have it already on, uh, my-
Thank you.
Email, yep, absolutely.
Appreciate it.
If you do, you do, if you don't, you're off to school.
Okay.
And I can send you my email, too.
Okay.
Just to mark, City Secretary.
Bobby said he turned it down.
Yeah, that's, good, the ladies are starting to cheer, so whatever you want, you want to turn it towards the stop.
He's come all the time.
I know, that's not fair, of course.
It's a hundred and ten degrees outside, the wind blows, they go, ooh, geez.
Yeah, if you want to cap it off, that's cool. Okay. Something like our fire truck going by. Okay, Ben's out, so, alright, so we're gonna get back into session. Alright, so, um, Mr. Ray Bolden just finished talking, and so what we're gonna do is open a public hearing, a public hearing is now open, and I have some cards, so I am going to, uh, alright. I have two cards that are, wish not to speak, so I'm gonna name those, uh, do not wish to speak, but is in opposition, Barbara Bradshaw. And also, we have Ashley Riley, uh, does not wish to speak, it is in opposition. And then we do have a few cards that want to speak, so we'll start with Charles Pierce, wishes to speak in opposition. Oh, I just grabbed him off the top.
Yeah, I was on top.
Yes, sir, yeah, well, I guess when you turned it in.
Yeah, good evening, City Council, and Mayor Innamood.
Yes, sir.
I'm Charles Pierce, live at seventy-two twelve Holly Lane, here in Colleyville, and, uh, well, I'm in protest of this, uh, it's not, I'm in protest of the swim pool, I'm in protest of our comprehensive plan, you know, may be violated, the way I consider, because we worked hard, and my hard is what I call hard, we designed that project, you know, we all negotiated, and we designed it, and we did, it was two years of hard, hard work, which some people say, oh, hard work, no, no, it was designed, and we planned it all, you know, and that's what we did, because you were on the City Council at the time, in Dotson, George Dotson, so, uh, anyway, we just kinda, I look at it like, well, I'm really concerned about the way it's gonna turn out, in case we do take, remove that, you know, easement, because if we remove the easement, that's where my concern is, because that opens the door. Once you open that door, then you have thirty-three other, you know, properties there, and then, from what he said, you know, the landscape easement's a word, or whatever it is, well, that means, oh, they own that land, well, here you come, man, here comes all kinds of, uh, zoning changes, and then, you might get yourself into a hornet's nest, because when you open up that door, then there's truck-full attorneys come in, and you know, when you get truck-full attorneys, you know, they can pull the string, they can talk, you know, they've got some pretty good language that I don't understand. Because, you know, I'm just an old Texan, and not attorney, but anyway, what I look at it kind of, it's like, we worked hard, and then, we had, you know, the project done, we had a buffer, and this, that's what it was really important, because when we built it, we sat there and put trees around, these trees are growing, and that buffer does them as well as it does us. So, you know, it's kinda like, the foundation I look at, well, you have then, you have all the properties, and there was thirty-four properties in there, well, they were going for around, you know, five-hundred thousand plus. Well, you have people, they move in there, and, you know, they do their due diligence, you know, they look at the property, and they're, you know, that's important, you know, you go, okay, here's a house, I can build on, if I want a swim pool, if I want this, I want that. Well, that's all on that owner right there, you know, he goes in there, and he buys it, and then he says, oh, I need to remove this landscape easement, well, that don't make no sense to me, it's like, wait, why didn't you, uh, consider that, why didn't you buy the property next door, if it had more, you know, you know, square footage? So, you kinda, you know, I look at everything like, I don't, he could have a swimming pool, that'd be fine, but, the most important thing, that comprehensive plan, we did, I mean, that's legal document, that was between the city of Colleyville, we had the whole town in here, you remember, we had everybody. That was forty-three and a half acres, and that thing had to be designed, and you know, that rural feel that we got, and we worked together on that, and you know, that's one thing about y'all, the City Council, y'all, y'all have a backbone, you're the backbone of this town, and it's very important for y'all to keep this city what it is, because I'm proud to be a citizen of Colleyville, and it's very, very important to keep the rural feel, and make things look really good, and we don't want that to be to start. If we're gonna break off a piece of landscape easement, whatever, and we open that door, then the next person's gonna want it, the next person, then suddenly, you get over to Holly Lane, well, that's where I'm at, from twenty-nine to thirty-four houses over there, you know, properties? But we have thirty foot there, and it goes from the stone wall all the way to Holly Lane. Well, you look at that, and you go, oh, what about them people, let's say they look down there and say, hey, man, let's get twenty-five feet here, well, are they gonna move the wall, I've seen them tear houses down, walls ain't nothing. So, it's just that, y'all integrity, y'all's integrity means a lot, you know, because when y'all do something, your backbone, you stick with it, and I really feel that, nothing personal, I don't have anything personal at all with, you know, Ray Bolden, or, you know, I wish he could get a pool, there's some way it'd be worked out, but, you know, it, he can put a pool in, but that, you know, you can do that, kinda like you did, Mayor Innamood, you know, you, you had strict, you know, restrictions there, so you had to move yours over, and it come out good. Same with him, he could move his pool over there, and then it may end up good, kids grow up, three or four, five years later, you know, he's gonna be, their kid's gonna be over there on the side, less noise, and they're gonna be looking at, oh, it ain't that noisy now, and the kid's gonna have their privacy. So, I just don't see strong-arming going like, okay, I'm gonna do this, I'm gonna do that, hey, do your due diligence, you know, if you're gonna buy a piece of property, you need to get in there, and you need to, that's on you. And, you know, and if it's for, if somebody wants to do a zoning change, and it's for the city, for the community, then, yeah, we'll listen, but if just for an individual, don't touch that, because we have, you know, we have it, we have right there our, you know, comprehensive plan, and that's strong with us, that's strong with city, and there's other places, you know, I mean, we have other subdivisions that have this also, and, uh, you know, what are they thinking, they're, a lot of people's watching this, and you know, they're sitting there going, oh, we got this, it's, we got our, uh, comprehensive plan now, uh-oh, what are they gonna do, they turn around, let one individual have it, because that's what he wants. Well, like I say, this isn't individually, but still, you know, this is real strong, you know, y'all make a decision, and what's right, you know, with wisdom, not feeling, you know, don't, sometimes you just can't feel sorry for people, but, I wish he'd get his pool, he can, he can get a small one, but, you know, you just gotta make, you know, you know what to do, you know, and I, I trust your decision, and you know, God bless y'all, y'all do such a good job, and all the Christmas cards, you know, support the businesses around, you know, y'all got a big heart, and I love this city, we got the best city in the world, and boy, and I say it from Colleyville, everybody says, wow, you can see a glow in their eye, and that's pretty cool. Anyway, thank you so much, and just, God bless y'all.
Thank you very much. That's Charles. George Dotson.
George Dotson, uh, seven-three-zero-nine, Ball Moro Drive, Colleyville. I'm not gonna go through a big speech, uh, just, uh, basically to indicate that, uh, you know, I, I certainly, uh, am in opposition of this request, uh, I was a member of the City Council, I have contacted, uh, five, uh, five, uh, you know, five other City Council members that, uh, voted for this, uh, property, and, uh, all, all of the ones that I talked to are opposed to this. Um, we did spend an awful lot of time with the, the owners on both sides of, of the development, and, uh, we, we came up with the landscape easement to protect the owners, uh, of Tryon-on-Court, uh, of having, uh, the backs of these properties, uh, in their front yards. And so, I think it's, uh, very important, uh, and, by the way, we did, uh, indicate the kinds of trees that could go into that, that easement. Uh, my reaction is that, uh, you don't plant trees in, uh, in pools, they don't, they don't live very long planted in pools. Uh, so, I, uh, understand that, uh, they're saying that, that the definition was not clear enough, it was very clear when we, uh, did the work, and you can go back and, and read exactly, uh, what, what we were thinking, uh, when we came up with it. I, I believe strongly that a pool can be put in, into that property, there's, there's plenty of room for it, uh, it may, it may not be exactly where, where they want it, but, uh, if the house was designed and architected for a pool, it could have easily been, been put there. Uh, and I actually believe that, uh, if the owner wants a pool in a certain place, he can modify the house, the house is not, uh, doesn't have to stay fixed exactly like it is. So, I hope, I know that, uh, you all will do the right thing, I appreciate every one of you, and, uh, I understand exactly, uh, the, you know, what you're going through, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next is Charles Mady, did I say it right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Good evening, Charles Mady, seventy-three oh-one, Tryon-on-Court, Colleyville, Texas, seven-six zero-three-four. I am a Tanglewood resident, I am also speaking on behalf of our HOA, as our president could not attend this evening's meeting, we are opposed to this variance request. Our subdivision was very involved with the developer of Oak Alley and the city, when it was going through the zoning process, screening, in terms of a masonry wall and landscaping, were at the top of our list of concerns. As the Oak Alley land plan has backyards in our front yards, we were correct, we requested as much separation and screening as possible. This was achieved with an eight-foot-high screening wall, a twenty-five-foot landscape easement, and a very specific requirement of three shade trees and three ornamental trees to be installed per one-hundred linear feet of landscape easement. Please keep it this way, please do not set a precedent allowing for a pool to be constructed within a landscape easement, not only in Oak Alley, but throughout the city of Colleyville. The applicant first requested a variance to allow for a pool in the easement, now it seems as if the strategy is to find a loophole, suggesting that a variance or amendment to the PUD is not needed, because it does not say that a pool cannot be installed in a landscape easement. A pool is not landscaping, a pool would not provide screening, only the required trees should be installed in the landscape easement, that is why trees are the only thing mentioned in the PUD. Having both would be impossible anyways, how could you have a pool where specifically mentioned trees are required to be, this simply does not make any sense. Who would have thought that almost seven years later, we would be back here talking about this? One would think it would be crystal clear as to what goes in a landscape easement, landscaping, period. Perhaps the ordinance should be reviewed, and possibly amended, to state that only landscaping goes in a landscape easement, and specifically prohibits pools, water features, sports courts, and other similar structures. We have no ill-will towards this family, and understand they want a pool in their backyard, we get it, it just needs to be outside of the landscape easement. There are viable options that I hope they will pursue, I have a few, uh, slides to illustrate this, and I'm not sure how I drive this puzzle. this, and I'm not sure how I drive this puppy.
Thanks, Ben. Appreciate ya. Start right there. And how do I move?
Either the maps or the keyboard.
Oh, thank you. Thanks, Ben. Is that one up? The one on the right? Uh, this is a rend, can I expand that or is that the? Okay. It's the, uh, the one on the right. Um, it was brought up earlier that, uh, nothing's been brought up about a, uh, a rendering of a pool, um, when it was being marketed. But, uh, this is a rendering of the pool, uh, or of a pool that the builder had in their marketing materials when they had the house up for sale. It's a smaller pool than what the applicant submitted, but it does seem appropriate for the size of the lot and the orientation of the house. You can also see a screening wall and a landscape easement, short of the tree requirement, of course. Next slide. This is the applicant's request with the pool in the landscape easement highlighted in yellow. I, I know you're familiar with this and you've, you've seen it many times, uh, including a few times this evening. This next one. Pretty much the same thing with just the pool moved. Uh, this is the exact size and shape pool from the applicant's request, shifted towards the south, uh, south of the lot, and it is totally outside of the landscape easement. It also shows a very interesting water feature that I think would tie in very nicely. The spa could be moved to the other side of the pool to eliminate any Give me 30 seconds. To eliminate any concerns of it being visible from the street. Uh, I hope these options will be considered. I just wanna talk about the, uh, about, uh, the trees, um, that, uh, or the backyard. There's a requirement, like I said earlier, uh, three, three shade trees, three ornamental trees. These are pictures from Mrs. Bradshaw's backyard. There's a lot of gaps here. I don't know if you can see the gaps. I don't even know if it's in compliance. This is, uh, what was presented us, uh, to the developer of Oak Alley. Um, I please ask this, it needs to be re-inspected to see if it's in compliance with the, uh, with the current ordinance. Okay. Thank you for your time. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. You bet. Thank you. Sure. Sorry I went overtime. That's okay. No worries. I'm probably gonna butcher this one. John Western?
Wes Camper.
Whoa, Wes Camper, okay.
I'll try to make that time back. My name is John West Camper, 7320 Tryon Court. I live right next to Barbara, so I am in that circle, uh, in the back. Um, this house was bought as is with the backlot that it came with. It is, using his word, common sense that they should have been aware of the zoning ordinances. I would put forth to you, who buys a house in this price range and isn't aware of what's gonna go on in their backyard? Also, there were three lots in the northwest corner of this, uh, development that back up to the pond. There's one there, two-level grass area and a pool, tons of room. I encourage y'all, go look at it. There's three other lots back that could have been purchased back there. Uh, there's been comments made about being still able to build a pool. Uh, it is common sense that Oak Alley residents have an inherent bias in voting for this because any, uh, removal of all these easements is in their best interest. So the fact that so many voted from Oak Alley to me is irrelevant. Uh, precedent, I think we've beat that one to death. Um, and no adverse impact. I resent that statement a little bit because why would I be here taking your time? Why would Barbara be here? Why would these people be here if there's no adverse impact? It affects Tryon Court. That's why we're here. Uh, it is common sense that a pool is not a plant. What message is Colleyville sending? You should ask before you buy. Again, common sense. The city of Colleyville has ordinances to, that affect building and we enforce those ordinances. That is the message that we're trying to send here. Uh, thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. I have no other cards. Anybody else wish to speak? See nobody else who wishes to speak, so I'm gonna close the public hearing. Okay, so, uh, a motion is in order and I'm gonna make that motion. I'm gonna motion to deny ordinance 0-25-2352.
I'll second.
Got a motion by myself and a second by Mayor Pro Tem Elder. The vote yes is to deny. Motion is denied 6-0. Thank you. Okay, we're moving to the next. Yes, we need to grab Ben, please. Let me just grab Ben real quick. Okay, I'm just, I'm texting my wife and one of our employees. That's fine.
Okay.
That's fine. I don't know who it is either.
I think already knows that you're not allowed to delete or remove any city buildings from your families.
So it's city business from our phones that's been texting right now. Okay, no problems. No worries. Okay, so Ben, welcome back. We are going into the second reading and public hearing of ordinance 0-25-2353, amending the zoning for Lot 1R2, Block 2 of Town Center, Colleyville, located at 1205 Church Street, by authorizing a special use permit for the sale of alcoholic beverages for on-premises consumption, providing a penalty of fine not to exceed the sum of $2,000 and providing an effective date. All right, Ben, we've been here before.
Yes. So second reading for a special use permit for alcoholic beverage sales for on-premises consumption. This is at 1205 Church Street. Uh, this is at the old location of the Black Walnut Restaurant. It is intended to be reoccupied for a new restaurant, uh, a Mediterranean restaurant. The current zoning is CC2, which is our shopping center district, and it is part of the Colleyville Boulevard corridor designation on our future land use map. A couple other rendering or images, perspectives of the site. It is a standalone building. It is intended, again, to be reoccupied as a restaurant. This is to be called the Truva Mediterranean Bar and Grill. So this is a proposed language. It is for on-premises consumption in conjunction with the restaurant only and tied specifically to the Truva Mediterranean Bar and Grill. And then if it does have an abandonment of the business, a change in the use or extermination or termination of the certificate of occupancy, it would have to come back for a new special use permit. However, we, we previously had language about ownership changes. Uh, we've removed that. Uh, we felt that tying it to the specific name made sense, uh, and it was appropriate to remove that. However, that can be added back in if you guys decide that it's necessary. Uh, we did send notices out to surrounding property owners, did not receive any responses back, one way or the other. Uh, staff recommends approval, as does the Planning and Zoning Commission. They voted 7-0 at their October 13th meeting.
Okay. Any questions for Ben?
I have a statement.
You have a state, well, I'm
Who has not been?
I'm going next week. I just got over being sick.
It is absolutely amazing. I'm so excited for them.
I've heard that.
Yeah.
All the reviews have been unbelievable.
Very, very good.
You know what? I think the, uh, wait, let's see. Yeah, applicants should come up and talk about their place for at least two, three minutes if they
Are they here?
Do you like to talk about your place?
I don't think so.
Don't think so. Okay. All right. So we're gonna, with that being said, I'm gonna open a public hearing. Public hearing is open. Anybody wish to speak? See nobody wishes to speak? A motion and a second is in order.
I'll make a motion.
Make a motion that we approve.
Whoa. Hey, that sounded like audio.
Like an echo, a little duet.
You go ahead.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance 0252353.
I'll second.
I got a motion by Councilwoman Gunderson and a second by Mayor Pro Tem Elder.
I was just really excited.
How I was too.
They are awesome from what I've heard. Motion passes 7-0. We're gonna roll through these. All right, this is the second reading of public hearing of ordinance 0-25-2354, amending the zoning on approximately 1.2 acres being Lot 4, Mrs. Eva Paul subdivision, located at 10005 Tinker Road, by authorizing a special use permit to allow for an accessory dwelling, providing a penalty of fine not to exceed the sum of $2,000 and providing an effective date. Big Ben, that's all.
Thank you. Also, a second reading for a special use permit, this one for an accessory dwelling at 1005 Tinker Road. Uh, this is close to the Pleasant Run intersection. It is zoned R40, which is a single-family residential district and is designated for residential use. So here's the different perspectives of the property. Uh, there is an accessory building that was permitted and built a few years ago on the back that you can see. Uh, they are not intending to expand that building as much as just remodel a portion of it to allow for it to be used as a dwelling. Uh, it's not the entire structure either, it's just a portion of it. In the R40 district, it does require a special use permit to have an accessory dwelling. And these were some exhibits that were provided when we permitted the building a few years ago. And here's some photos. Uh, the garage space, I think, will remain, uh, but the backside, which is used as a workout room and space, that will be converted into the dwelling. Uh, but the garage itself, I believe, is staying as is.
Yeah.
And so again, the proposed language, to allow for an accessory dwelling, consistent with these plans. We did send our notices out to surrounding property owners, did not receive any response back for this item. Staff does recommend approval, as does the Planning and Zoning Commission. They voted 7-0 at their October 13th meeting.
Okay. Any questions for Ben? All right, I think that we went through this last time and it was pretty self-explanatory. So I'm gonna open a public hearing. Public hearing is now open, but anybody like to speak? See nobody wishes to speak? Close the public hearing. A motion and a second is in order.
A motion that we adopt ordinance 0-25-2354.
Second.
I'm gonna give this one to Mr. Alfonso. I have a motion by Councilmember Graves and a second by Councilmember Alfonso. Ben's been missing in action. He's wanting to have some of this, I tell you. Get, get his money's worth. Motion passes 7-0. Thank you. All right, this is the second reading of public hearing. I expect to go out there and see that Jambo pit sometime. That is pretty look Oh, no. You don't do that to no boy like that. Um, this is the second reading of public hearing of ordinance 0-25-2355, amending the zoning on approximately 6.6 acres being Lot 1R, Block 1 Kroger Edition, located at 4904 Colleyville Boulevard, by authorizing a special use permit to allow for an electric vehicle charging station, providing a penalty of fine not to exceed the sum of $2,000 and providing an effective date. I think we kinda went through this one and where it was gonna be located.
Yeah.
And what it looks like. Yep.
So I'll just get to that. Uh, this is at the Walmart site, uh, just here close by to City Hall. It does require a special use permit for a commercial vehicle's charging stations. And it is, so I've highlighted the, the row of parking specifically, so it's on their left side, uh, close to the edge of their building before it gets to the other suites. And they are, um, proposing eight total charging stations. There'd be four actual machines that will service two spaces. In addition to, uh, that row of parking and the adjustments there, we did have them look at maybe enhancing some of the other islands. And so they have, uh, intended, they have identified that they will make improvements on other parking islands as well. And no trees that exist in any of these islands will be affected. They will all be able to be preserved and maintained. And so this is a specific language. There are some regulations that we added with the text in the Land Development Code. All of those will be, uh, met as part of this development. And so this will just allow for those spaces. And I think it was brought up and I failed to mention it, but they are also adding some additional spaces to the backside of the building. So if there is a need for overflow parking, they have offset whatever they're losing with these improvements by adding some additional on the backside as well. And, uh, we did not receive any responses back for this item either, and staff does recommend approval, as does the Planning and Zoning Commission. They voted 7-0 at their October 13th meeting.
Any questions for Ben?
I just wanted to make a comment. There was one, um, letter of opposition that we got via email. And they were, I think, a little confused on the fact that we asked the applicant about the, if they needed a handicap parking site to ask, and then they were thinking that cars could just be, electric cars could just be abandoned there for an extended period of time. That wasn't the, the message that they were trying to deliver. They were just saying that they're not making it a practice to tow those cars. And so I believe the time was 48 hours. Not that you could just leave EVs there for extended amount of time. So I just wanted to address that, to make sure that I was reading that properly and that, I would assume that's the case, but.
Yeah, I know the applicant is able, is here and can answer those questions and verify that, yeah.
Okay, and I, go ahead. Remo will come up. And also, I wanted to say that I responded to, uh, a, a person who had concerns. And then once I, uh, I, they know that I'm not a real big fan of the electric stations, but I did say that Walmart does stuff classy and they're very good at what they do. And this technology is coming. And so as reluctant as I am, you know, I see this coming. And so I know that you guys would do a great job at what you're gonna do. And so I'm gonna be in favor of this, uh, just because I think this will be something that's very good, especially with having the handicap spots in it.
Yep.
Yes, sir.
Mm-hmm. So, yeah, was I correct? Like that, y'all just aren't gonna be towing, but you can't just leave the cars there for
That is correct. Um, let me introduce myself. Uh, Eric John, 2600 North Central Expressway, uh, working for Kim Lee Horn, who's the, I'm the, and I'm the project lead for this project. Um, and to your point, yes, uh, I believe if Mina was here, he kinda briefly touched on this last time we were talking about this. Um, if the car is sitting there for more than 48 to 72 hours, then it's per Walmart policy to get those vehicles towed.
Right.
However, that's not the priority for them. Um, and, you know, so.
Yeah, that's, that's the way he had said it too. And I wanted to echo what you said too. I, I'm not a big fan of a bunch of charging stations, but I also responded to someone, if, if anybody's gonna be able to do it well, it's gonna be in this parking lot and we're, they're gonna be somewhere. So I, I would be more in favor of it being here than multitude of other places.
Okay. Any more questions for the applicant?
Are you up? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
I'm gonna open a public hearing. Public hearing is now open. Anybody wish to speak? See nobody wishes to speak? Close the public hearing. A motion and a second is in order.
Motion to approve ordinance O-25-2355.
I'll second.
All right, I got a motion by Councilmember Alfonso and I got a second by Deputy Mayor Pro Tem. Motion has passed and approved 7-0. Thank you, guys. Thanks for doing good stuff over there. All right, so last but not least is citizen comments. I do not have a card. I do have a card.
You have one now.
Mr. David Groves.
David Groves, 5702 Panda Rosa Street. I wanna thank the council for doing the right thing tonight and supporting the Planning and Zoning Commission. I, I did wanna clear up a few things. I don't think they're relevant to the case, so I decided to hold my comments to, to this portion of the agenda. I think their attorney, uh, exploited the social media, but for the record, and I think that the, as many of you are recipients of the open records request, I had to provide information to Christine and she was very gracious about accommodating my vacation and worked with me to get that all in, as well as Attorney Ross's, uh, firm as well. Any of the social media content was, occurred on the 14th of October. Our vote was taken on the 13th of October. And as the Deputy Planning and Zoning Commission Chair, none of that was a factor in our decision, when we made that decision. Anything that came, I brought, was, I wasn't made aware of social media the day after we voted. So to think that that was an influence in our decision, it was not. And in fact, one of the things talked about grieving was in open records, in the open records request, was a text exchange I had with Councilman Rain after, uh, Mr. Collins' daughter had a little bit of a terse verbal exchange with me after our first meeting two weeks ago. And I had commented to Commissioner Rain, I think she's still grieving. Obviously, she misses her dad and I understand that, but had no bearing Obviously, she misses her dad, and I understand that, but had no bearing on the case that you heard. So, once again, thank you for supporting the Planning and Zoning Commission and doing the right thing for all the citizens of Colleyville. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Anybody else wish to speak? Sure, Brandon?
I had a few words.
Then I'm gonna close this out at, if there's no objection, I'm gonna close it out. I can't see my phone right now.
26.
9:25. All right, good. Thank you.